We need to order, we all please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay Jeff, got a roll call please?
Yes, um, Mr. Culpepper.
Present.
Dr. Denson.
Present.
Mr. Griffiths.
Here.
Mr. Huntington.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Ms. Mia.
Present.
Mr. Willis.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum to conduct business this evening.
Okay, thank you. Can I have approval of the agenda please?
To the Chair.
Mr. Culpepper.
I so move that the agenda be approved as written.
Second.
Okay, the agenda's been approved by Commissioner Culpepper, seconded by Commissioner Mia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have announcements and communications.
Yeah, if I may through the Chair, um, we do have a section of our agenda this evening called Public Comment. Uh, I did want to at least bring that to the attention of, of the public who is here this evening. I did make an announcement about three or four minutes ago that folks could sign up for that time. Uh, so I'm gonna go grab that list, uh, if I may at the moment, and then we can move on from there.
Okay. I'd like to read a statement, uh, in the meantime. The Southfield Planning Commission is a seven board member appointed by the Mayor, approved by the City Council, and acts as a, an advisory, uh, capacity to the Council to make recommendations on text amendments to the Southfield zoning ordinance, rezoning requests, special land uses, site plan reviews, the Southfield Master Plan, and the Capital Improvement Plan. Our study meetings and regular meetings are open to the public in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, P.A. two six seven of nineteen seventy-six, and are held on Wednesday evenings at six thirty. Meeting agendas are posted on Friday evenings before the next Wednesday meeting and are available for viewing at cityofsouthfield.com. Copies of plans, text amendments, and the Master Plan and Capital Improvement Plan are available for viewing at the Planning Department offices. Current projects can be viewed using our online interactive tool on the Planning Department's homepage, Planning Department's Project Online. Contact the Planning Department at two four eight seven nine six four one five zero with any questions. Again, two four eight seven nine six four one five zero with any questions, Monday through Friday, eight o'clock till five P.M.
Through the Chair, I just want to make a clarification for the public. Um, you do not need to sign up if you're speaking on a public hearing item. You just come up during that time. But if you want to speak on something that is not on the agenda, that's what the general public comment is for.
Okay.
So again, if you, if you're here to speak on one of the public, um, hearing items, you just come up at that time, and you don't need to sign up. But if you want to speak on something in general, that's what the sign up sheet is for.
Okay, okay. Okay, do we have anyone that wants to speak?
Yeah, if I may through the Chair, I do have a list.
You do have a list, okay.
Of a number of folks here. Um, I will go from top to bottom.
Okay.
Uh, in, in the order in which they signed up. Pamela Gerald. Uh, if Ms. Gerald is not here, Gerard Mullin. I'm sorry, I can't read the name Neil, last name Neil.
I was in the restroom, did you call my name over?
Yes, uh, okay, she's here.
Let's go through the rest of the list.
Okay.
Uh, Constance Bell.
We're here for the public.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, I just, I just want to make sure that we go through this list properly. Um, I'm sorry, I can't read the, the fifth name on, on the list here. Uh, last, last name is Jesse Johnson. Here for the public. Okay, then we'll go back up to Ms. Gerald.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Well, for communications, you don't necessarily have to, but for public hearings, you have to. But I will since you ask me.
Okay.
Pamela Gerald, P.O. Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. My telephone number's two four eight three four six zero four three nine. I just wanna comment about the city possibly being in error for trying to enforce something and you don't have the original plans. It's purported that what the residents have been trying to get from the city regarding Lockmore Homes is the original plans. So if you can't access the original plans via microfilm, then what can you enforce? And I would suggest to this body, being only a recommending body, and the final decision lying with the City Council, that you not be so quick to move forward if you cannot access those original plans. I've only been around for thirty-six years, and I'm sure maybe some of you have been around the city longer than me. And what I do understand about the process is, once you submit plans, every time something changes, it's not a verbal change. It is a change that is justified by a change in the actual plan itself. If I'm wrong, I stand to be corrected by any of you up there. But if I'm right, you have to say something to these residents. And I plan on speaking for the public hearing as well, but I just wanted to impress upon you to try not to make any decisions without those original plans. And you can't orchestrate an ordinance taking the rights from the residents just so someone can do their plan and get it started again to finish. It's a process, and it's a proper process. And I want you guys to really be mindful of that. I know sometimes the stamp is real quick and you go approve, but this is a very unique situation. And just think, if it was your subdivision where each one of you lived, and this was happening to you, would you make the same decision? Just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the Chair, is there a three minute time limit on the?
Yes.
Yes, three minutes.
Two fifty-nine, fifty-nine.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, I'd like to, uh, open a public hearing. First on the agenda, we have P.S.L. U-eighteen dash zero 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 seven.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we do have i- two items this evening. Uh, actually, P.S.L. U-eighteen dash zero 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 seven, as well as under the site plan portion, P.S.P. eighteen dash zero 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 nine. Uh, this is the special use and site planner view request for the gas station corner of Eight Mile Road and Berg, or Lasser Road, uh, if you recall. We did postpone this item last month, uh, because they were not quite ready to, to move forward. Uh, I did get an email from the, one of the petitioners today. Again, they are not quite ready, obviously, uh, 'cause we did not have any, uh, study meetings with them at all uh, in the month of May. So what, uh, staff is asking, and what the petitioner has asked, is that for another postponement to your June agendas, in this case, uh, we would postpone to a date certain, that being the June twenty-sixth regular meeting for both of those items.
Okay, do I have a motion?
To the Chair.
Commissioner Culpepper.
I so move that P.S.L. U-one eight dash zero zero seven be postponed to date certain, that date being June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Culpepper, seconded by Commissioner Mia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
To the Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Culpepper.
I would also move that site plan, P.S.P. one eight dash zero zero nine, also be postponed to date certain, that date being June twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Culpepper, seconded by Commissioner Mia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, okay, so that has been?
If I may through the Chair, just to, uh, the audience, if there's anyone here who, uh, was expecting to, to hear those particular cases, uh, again, those will be postponed to the June twenty-sixth regular meeting.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have P.Z.R. nineteen dash zero 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 one.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Two, 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 two.
Uh, if you recall, we did actually go through these particular, this particular project, uh, the rezoning requests of Decorah Construction, uh, to rezone point three acres of land from R-two single-family residential to O.S. Office Service, as well as the P.S.L. U-nineteen dash zero 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 one, uh, the use of the existing house, two thousand square feet or more for daycare center, and then, uh, the companion site plan, P.S.P. nineteen dash zero 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 one. Again, that is the, uh, opportunity, site planner view request to convert the existing house to a daycare center with associated parking, drop off, et cetera. Uh, we did hold the public hearings, uh, and discuss the site plan at the, uh, previous meeting, so we do not have to go through that process again. Uh, but we do have the petitioner at least here this evening. Um, so at least we want to give him an opportunity to at least go through, uh, that particular case. Just again, as a reminder to the, to the Commission, uh, and shown on the screen now, uh, this piece of property located one nine eight three one West Nine Mile Road. It's the property in itself, existing conditions. O.S. Office Service directly adjacent to the property is owned R-two single-family residential. And again, the proposal is to go to O.S. Office Service, similar to the property directly to the west. Uh, if you recall, um, the owner of the current O.S. Office Service property is actually the same person who will be owning this particular piece of property. They have a daycare currently on that property, and, uh, their business is expanding, and they would like to move to the adjacent property, rezone it, and then use that property for daycare center. Again, same information, uh, as with the rezoning, with the existing conditions. Site plan portion. The building itself, the elevations. And then the site plan. Uh, if you recall, we will be looking at some waivers. Uh, because it's an existing structure, uh, rezoning to O.S. Office Service does set up, uh, some setback, uh, issues with regard to side yard setback, front yard setback, as well as some landscaping. So this is the site plan in which they would like to move forward with.
Okay. Can I have the petitioner please, uh, come to the mic please and give us your name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is Hassan Badun with Decorah Construction. I'm here on behalf of the owner. My phone number is three one three seven seven nine seven seven nine nine.
Okay, can you please give us an overview of your project?
Sure. Uh, currently, we have an adjacent daycare that's, uh, running, and we are over capacity. And we acquired the next door house so we can utilize it as a, uh, overflow of, uh, our, uh, existing daycare. We can use it in that location. And, uh, uh, we provided the site plans and all means, uh, with the city to, uh, accommodate that, uh, need. And, um, that would help to assist more students and more, uh, daycare, uh, people.
Okay, okay.
Any questions?
Okay, well, this is a public hearing, uh.
If, if I may through the Chair, we already had the public hearings.
Okay, this is, okay, we close the podium.
We just want to remind the Commission to, um, act on each one separately.
Right.
So we start with the rezoning.
Okay, okay. Okay, Commissioners? Any questions, concerns?
To the Chair. To the Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Culpepper?
Uh, as we, as we talked in our, uh, study session, I, I don't have a problem with this rezoning. Uh, matter of fact, it, it meets our master plan. It fits perfectly into what we want to do in that area, uh, being that you already have the daycare next door. So it, it's compatible to what you're doing, uh, not gonna cause any more issues that I think that you can't resolve. So, um, I think it's perfectly well that we rezone this area to accommodate you since you do have an overflow next door. And, uh, as we know that, uh, we do have a problem with daycare in this area, and it's applicable that you are trying to do something right next door in proximity. So I have no issue with the rezoning, and I, I approve of the rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Okay, okay, Commissioner Denson?
Thank you. Um, what are the hours of the, um, daycare?
The hour of operation, it's from, uh, as a, as a start from, um, morning until, uh, afternoon, like five o'clock. Uh, that's when the times, we have a really stressed and existing location. So, uh, but basically, that would be the hours from seven till five, six o'clock.
So, I, I thought that one of them were twenty-four hours.
The one we have is twenty-four hours right now.
Okay.
Yeah, and we, I mean, if we get over, uh, to that size, then we will expand the hours. But right now, the issue is, during the day, is we have the, the, the pressure and the capacity. We don't have that problem in the evening and at night. So, the allocation we have, accommodate enough people in the after hours, uh, after the business hours. But, um, but as a start, we started from seven to six, and then.
Through the Chair, I just, the Planning Commission, we're focusing on the rezoning, on the merits of the rezoning right now. That would be more appropriate under the special land use or the site plan.
Thank you.
So you gotta look at all of the possible uses in the O.S., and I would ask that you just focus your questions on the rezoning portion at this point.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Is, uh, do we have a square footage of the existing office service zoning, and then what the total square footage, or the acreage or square footage would be adding this parcel? Um, contiguous zoning?
Oh, um, no, you're talking about the, the existing O.S.?
Yeah, next to this site is existing O.S. zoning.
It, it's, it's pretty comparable, so I would say it's probably at least similar to what the exist, uh, the, on this one right here, which is point three.
Okay.
So it's somewhere between point three and point five.
Do we have?
I think so.
Okay.
Do you have that?
Commissioner Denson?
Thank you. Um, does the, uh, Planning Department have question, I mean, have comments from the, um, engineer in, in terms of the use between, um, residential and office, only because of the, um, that, 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 um, corner? If the, if they have, you know, if, if it's, um, changed, how does that affect, um, the current, I mean, the, um, proposed use?
With regards to traffic?
In terms of traffic?
The O.S. would generate more traffic than a single-family residence, but not to the degree where it would affect the capacity of Nine Mile or Evergreen Road. And, and if I could, to Mr. Griffiths, um, if you were looking that the two contiguous parcels with the one across the street are, is more than one acre.
Okay.
I know our standard is an acre or more, but if it's adjacent to or contiguous with other similar zoning that's greater than an acre, that's when we've, we've rezoned.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Denson?
Just to be clear, so, um, do, do we have a, a statement from the, um, engineer, or are you just saying?
Well, I was making that statement.
Okay.
But I can tell you that the engineer, um, is vetted on each of these cases.
Okay.
And she chooses to only give us comment if there's an issue that she wants to comment on.
Okay, thank you.
But, but she is part of the distribution of these reviews.
Okay, thank you.
As well as the fire marshal, the community policing. The traffic engineer, the landscape designer, and the planner. Those are all, everybody, uh, we ask, we seek their comments. And sometimes they choose not to make a comment if there isn't anything worth their commenting on. So, I, I was making that comment about the traffic.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Chair.
Commissioner?
Are there any plans or considerations for obtaining the property next door to the east for future expansion?
Not right now, not right now. I, I don't think we'll be in need for, at this time. Because we have the two locations, that's, I think, enough square footage and enough capacity.
Okay. Okay, overall, I think the rezoning makes sense. Uh, you have a daycare there now, it's been working well. Uh, I don't think it will affect traffic in that area. Uh, you know, daycares are important here in the city of Southfield, they're necessary. Uh, I think it fits in well with what we have with the master plan, and, so, I don't have a problem with the rezoning. I think it fits well in that area. Thanks. Okay. Do, any other comments from the Commissioners? Okay, uh, Jeff?
Yep, we do have a planning recommendation for you.
From the Planning Department?
Thank you. With regard to P.Z.R. nineteen dash zero 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 two, uh, the Planning Department recommends favorable recommendation to rezone point three acres of land from R-two single-family residential to O.S. Office Service for the following reasons. Southfield comprehensive master plan indicates moderate single-family for this property. Change in zoning would be compatible with and similar to existing adjacent land uses to the west. Proposal is in accordance with the standards for rezoning for the property.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Yes, uh, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like a motion, we accept P.Z.R. one nine dash zero 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 two from favorable press from the Planning, uh, Planning Department.
Support.
Okay, I have a favorable recommendation from Commissioner Mia, supported by Commissioner Culpepper. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, through the Chair, uh, while we're taking the vote, I'd like to just note that I am abstaining from the vote.
Okay.
And, um, to let the audience know, I'm going to abstain for the same reason from several other votes. Uh, I have been absent from a number of meetings for, uh, medical reasons, and so rather than trying to guess, uh, I'm going to abstain to make sure we have an appropriate voting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's well noted. Okay, we're all set. Thank you, passes.
Yeah, if I may through the Chair, then the companion special land use? You need to now take a vote on the special land use portion.
Okay, uh, okay, do we have a motion for the special land use?
So, through the Chair, the hours of operation, those kind of questions would be appropriate now.
Okay, kind of out of whack here. Uh, can I have a petitioner back to the front, please? Few more cautions from you from the Commission. Commissioner Mia?
Uh, yes, uh, just for the public, uh, uh, with the discussion on the house next door that you're gonna use, uh, will you be used, will you be putting a sign, 'cause there's a horseshoe there. That's kind of confusing, and it is on Nine Mile, it is heavy traffic there. Will there, will there be a sign there in that horseshoe directing the parents in the right direction? So they won't be going, crossing as they're coming and going?
Yes.
So it won't be hazard?
Yes, there'll be a sign there, and we're gonna completely renovate and remodel that property to accommodate the daycare.
To the Chair.
Commissioner Culpepper?
Thank you. Uh, as you know, this is one of the things I brought up in the study meeting is, uh, that circular driveway, which I'm thinking she's talking about.
Yes.
Uh, going, going east on Nine Mile is a heavy traffic zone, and my concern was safety. I know that when people going east are getting ready to pull into that circular driveway, I, I hope there's signage out there, or when you talk to your people, you ask them to pull all the way up. And my concern is, we know that when people pull into circular driveways, they pull and stop. We need to ensure that they, you know, go all the way around and make room.
Yes.
Because what we would hate to hear or see on accident report is, accident at Evergreen and Nine Mile was because somebody couldn't get in the driveway and they stopped. Uh, again, it fits into the use with, not gonna affect traffic if they pull up. So, I don't know if, uh, the Planning Department, we plan to put in the conditions of having signage set. We know it's one way in and one way out, which is perfect. But we need to ensure that Nine Mile is not blocked, that they pull up and pull all the way around in that circular driveway.
Definitely.
Okay, I, I am concerned about someone pulling in and not being able to get in that driveway and stop on Nine Mile and back up traffic. That is a concern of mine, and I see that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
To the Chair.
Commissioner Martin?
If I remember correctly from my visit to the location, the school that's existing to the west of that has parking, that has access to the parking area, where if there's traffic back up, your, your, uh, parents can pull into that parking lot?
Yes.
And wait so that they can, so it's not the cost? Is that something that you plan on instructing the parents that, so that they're aware that we don't want any congestion on Nine Mile?
True, true, and, and also, if you see the site plan, it shows that the front is all of it, it has a wider entry, and, and we have pavement everywhere, uh, to show more, like, easy access in and access out.
Commissioner Mia?
Also, I believe, uh, for the public, the fencing, uh, was something gonna be done about the fence that's quite rickety in the back? Is that gonna be taken care of for the public?
Yes, there's, it's, it shows in the plan, we have a cement or concrete fence going all the way around the property. It'll be a high privacy cement fence.
I'm talking about the, 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 the property on the side that you're gonna be using now, that house in the back. The, the one that's existing now.
Chosen, right, if you see, if you look in the plan?
It's all the way around.
It's right there.
Right up here, it's six foot high.
Yep, it's a screen wall, complete screen wall to, between the property and the neighbors. So it'll be completely, you know, sealed up.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Um, so, now, what are the hours from, um, from, I mean, for the existing and the proposed?
Um, the, the, the existence is twenty-four hours. Um, the, this one here, it should be the same, um, matter, but as a start for the business, the only timing right now that we need help with, like, place, we need more space for, is between seven and, and six o'clock, when we are congested at that time. But it is, hopefully, we can get more busy, and hopefully, they will be at twenty-four hours, uh, too, you know?
Commissioner Culpepper?
No, let her finish, no, go ahead, finish.
So, um, would, would, would they have to have an adjustment?
Right, I, what I would recommend, the Planning Commission can recommend a set hours.
Right, yes.
And let's say seven to seven P.M., and then if they find that there's a need to go beyond,
We can come back for.
They come back through the process.
Yes, that's right.
And that way, if And that way, if there's anything that is of concern, we can address it then. So my recommendation would be that if you would consider favorable approval, that we make the condition from seven AM to seven PM.
Seven PM, that's true, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
To the chair.
Okay, Commissioner Culpepper?
Yeah, that was, that was my question also, because when we talked last time, you gave us an hour. That's five days a week, from seven to seven. So now, you're saying that, well, it could be one way or another. We want this thing to be clean when it goes to the City Council, and I think the director put it very well. And if this is approved, we're gonna put hours down, seven to seven, five days a week. And if you get more people to come in, and you wanna up the hours to what you have next door, you would come back to the Planning Department with that, okay? We just want this to be clean, so when it goes to the council, we don't want them to think we didn't do our due diligence.
True.
And say, wait a minute, you don't know if you open seven days a week or what your timing. So, right now, it's gonna be seven to seven, five days a week with your new establishment. Now, I'm talking about your old, that's, that's out of, out of my scope, but the new is seven to seven, and if thing changes, you pick up, you'll go to the Planning Department and ask for additional hours.
Definitely.
So that's, make sure we have the understanding, as Commissioner Denson.
If I may, through the chair, can we be more specific on five days a week? Are we talking Monday through Friday? I think we need to be clear on that.
I'm not talking anything, I'm going by what he said. Are you open five days a week?
We open, actually, we open, we open seven days a week in the other one. But this one here, it'll be, it'll be, I believe, six days a week.
Okay, well, that's where we want clarification.
You got it, okay.
Do you want Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday.
Okay, so Monday through Saturday.
The building that you have is not in my scope. The new building that's before us now for the rezoning, that's in my scope. That building will operate six days a week from seven to seven, starting now.
That's exactly.
That's the scope.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Jeff, okay. I'm just going by what you said, six days a week is what we're looking at?
Yes.
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven.
Okay? Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. I have a question, too, how large is your staff?
For, for, for this location?
Yes.
This location is gonna have, um, like, four rooms, so it'll be like six, six people working in there.
Will there be somebody outside kind of assisting the kids as they get out the car and into the school, or is that up to the parents to get them in there?
Usually, actually, the parents will bring them into the property.
So the parents have to be, so the parents are gonna basically park their car?
They park, and they bring them in, yes.
Into the school?
Yes, yes, unless some, some, some parents, they will call ahead and one of the, one of the teachers go outside if it's, let's say, baby or, you know.
So would that kind of cause a traffic backup there?
No, we have parking spot, they have to park in the, in the parking spot. There's no, like, on the street or in the driveway parking. They have to really park and bring their kids in, and, and they leave. They have to sign in the kids.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not just drop off outside and just run to the school, it's not a school thing.
Walk in, sign in, okay.
Yeah, they gotta park and bring the kids inside and sign in, yeah.
Okay.
Question.
Commissioner Denson?
Thank you. So, you said, um, three, I mean, four, um, people will be working, how, oh, six, six people?
Six.
Yeah, it'll be four teachers, for every room, one teacher for four or five students, and then it'll be the, the, the two, the two assistants and the manager inside.
So, how, how many, I don't, how many parking spots are there?
There's seven. Yeah, there are seven parking spots.
So.
That meets the requirement for the use that's being proposed.
Commissioner Culpepper?
To the chair. Uh, you spoke about this in the study meeting, but let's be specific. What is the age range that you're gonna be able to take kids in this particular site? What's your age range?
Uh, I believe it's noted on the plans, the age range, but, um, it'll be all the way, I think, up to like twelve or thirteen. It's noted on the plans in there, I, I don't have in front of me.
All right, you're gonna start taking kids in six months, eight months, or whatever, up until?
Yeah, we have the rooms divided by the age.
You have the rooms divided by the age?
Yeah, the, the rooms inside are divided by the age, so that the group age of two years old, they'll be in one room.
No, okay, I understand that, okay, you're going back to her question. I'm saying, I, as a parent, need daycare, and I have a six-month-old child.
Yes.
You would take my six-month-old child?
Yes, yes. Yeah, there's no, there's no age limit really for all the kids.
There's no age limit?
No.
You'll take, okay, that's what, no age, you'll take any kid in, okay? Okay, that's, that was my concern, you'll take any age limit. Because when you go before, you're looking at Terry, you better look at here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
When you come before the council, these are questions that may come up. They need to know who is in that residence.
Okay.
Because we have a thing, but I like about, you got one floor, so you don't have to worry about egresses and egress coming out. But these are questions that's gonna come up, and we wanna make sure we got the record clear, that you've got enough ample qualified people?
Yes.
On staff, and we realize you are regulated by the state, and we realize you're doing a great job next door.
Yes.
So we just hope that transfer over, it's simultaneous, it's visible. But we need to make sure you've got qualified people in that can take your these kids from six months on.
Yes.
So we need to know who's in that building at all times.
True.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Martin?
Uh, to the chair, I believe during the planning session, we discussed with the owner, and she was indicating that that building was primarily for toddlers, do you?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, the last name is that?
I believe she indicated that primarily toddlers would be taken care of in that facility.
True, because, this is the reason why she said that, because that's when we have the access from the other building to that one, that's when we have the most kids, it'll be toddlers, is the heavy pressure in other, in other locations.
So, in essence, you're not having five, six-year-olds, you're having one, six months to two years?
True, but we don't wanna, we don't wanna limit people from not coming, that's of course, you know, we don't wanna say we're only toddlers and we don't have?
So I was just trying to?
Yeah, yeah, that's why we don't wanna limit the age, that's true.
And you had mentioned a higher age range initially, and I knew that in the planning session review, that it was a lower age range, and I'm just trying to confirm that it's toddlers, so that you have six months to one or two years old, not three, you know, not older kids that could be causing problems for the younger kids.
True, true, but that's, that's the, like I said, that's the heavy mostly, most of the daycare heavy use is between the age, the toddler age.
If I could, through the chair?
Okay.
The floor plan states one room will be dedicated to newborn to one year, four children max. The toddlers are one year to thirty months, four children max. Preschoolers are age thirty months, three years, six children max, and additional preschooler room ages four to five. So it's from newborn to five, in this building?
Yes.
According to the plan. They're separated, yeah. But, to, I think to the commissioners' point, the proprietor or operator should be at the council meeting to answer these questions.
Yes, we've been through this in the last meeting, and that's, that's why it wasn't for us to, to bring, you know, the same, like, kind of detailed questions like that.
Well, we're saying that you need, need to have the operator at the council meeting to answer these questions.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yeah, along those same lines, the state of Michigan governs daycares, they determine how many staff for what age kids, and?
True.
I don't think it's in our best interest to try and remember those rules up here, none of us are in charge of it, I don't know that we can even enforce it. And I think it's important to note that this may have been a single-family house at one time, you're going through the commercial building code, you're changing the occupancy of the building, you're bringing this building up to standards as a commercial daycare with all the appropriate, again, the oversight of the Building Department of the city of Southfield. I only make this distinction because we do review in-home daycares, which this will not be.
No.
You're putting in a parking lot, you're putting in a commercial screening fence, you're, you were residential, you no longer are anymore, so you're, you're going above and beyond the safety standards, and it wasn't restated here, I'm just restating from memory. So I think that's important to this project, that it's not an in-home daycare, because there's gonna be some confusion, because it looks like a house, it was a house, it's no longer a house anymore. This building is held to very, very strict standards, but at the same time, it's a small building, it's a two thousand square foot building. It's not intense, you know, if there was a twenty-four-hour, one or two children staying overnight, that their parents are a nurse or a doctor, it's, it's not this every five-minute stream of traffic into it, so I would not be opposed to this, this location becoming twenty-four hours, because it's gonna be so, very few people in and out, I would think, because of the size and the limited size of the building. So, it's, it's a nice, simple reuse of an existing building project, it's on a main road, it's, it makes sense that it can become a commercial project, in my opinion, so.
Can you speak on any outdoor activity from the kids that you'll be having?
Well, we will be having the outdoor activity in the back, we'll be playing the playground, and all, all these things will be in the back, like, the same exact, like, the next door. We'll have the same exact playgrounds, same exact activities, facilities, like the next door one. So, we will be having the NHS and applying the playground. But also, the playground will have a different set of, like, a detailed plan for the playground, you know, that regulated by the state.
Okay, see that, see that. Okay. Overall, you know, I have good feelings about the project, I think it'll do well. You've been in business for a while now, daycare is important in the city of Southfield, it's definitely necessary. The only, my biggest issue, problem is really the traffic flow, I think it could be a problem. Hopefully, you guys are, possibly have someone out there kind of directing and making sure people go where they need to go, and, and park like they need to park. But I know around daycares, parents always get in a hurry, and they're rushing, they're speeding, they park any kind of way, and they're running late for work, so I think it's gonna be more than just putting signs up, I think you're gonna have to really kind of regulate things and the traffic flow a little bit, to make things flow well and make it safe, because it is gonna get kind of tight there. Okay, anything else, any other comments from commissioners? Okay, Mr. Planner, can we have a?
Thank you. With regard to PSLU nineteen dash zero 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 one, Planning Department recommends favorable recommendation of the special use request of Decorate Construction. Behalf of the owner, Tomorrow's Star Academy daycare, use an existing house, two thousand square feet or more, for daycare use property located one nine eight three one West Nine Mile Road, for the following reasons and conditions. Receipt of waivers from the zoning board of appeals for eight point two five feet of landscaping in the front yard, eight point two five feet required, zero feet provided. Four point seven foot east building side yard setback, fifteen feet required, ten point three feet provided. Submitted special use with any conditions recommended by the Planning Commission and the Planning Department will be of subsides and character, that it will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the OS Office Service District. Location, size, intensity, and hours of operation of the proposed use is designed to eliminate any possible nuisance likely to emanate therefrom, which might be adverse to occupants of any nearby permitted uses. Proposed use is in accord with the spirit and purpose of the chapter, and is not inconsistent with or contrary to the objectives sought to be accomplished by this chapter or the principles of sound planning. Proposed use is of such character and vehicular traffic generated will not have an adverse effect or be detrimental to the surrounding land uses or adjacent thoroughfares. Proposed use is of such character and intensity and arrange on the site so as to eliminate any adverse effects resulting from noise, dust, dirt, glare, odor, fumes. Proposed use will not be adverse to the promotion of health, safety, and welfare of the community. Proposed use is designed and operated so as to provide security and safety to employees and the general public, and hours of operation shall be seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, have a motion, please?
Yes, through the chair, I'd like to make a motion, due to the favorable recommendation from the Planning Department, that we accept PSLP, what is it, PSLU one nine dash zero 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 one?
Support.
Okay, I have a favorable recommendation from Commissioner Mia, seconded by Commissioner Denson, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Commissioner abstain.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Willis will abstain. Okay, thank you, it moves forward.
Okay, and then finally, we have the site plan portion. Yeah, I know.
Okay, site plan, PSP nineteen dash zero 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 one. Any questions, concerns about the site plan? Okay. Yeah, I think we pretty much covered the site plan very well. Any other questions, concerns? Personally, I think the site works out well for what you're trying to do, you're there now, you're just expanding your business, which is always a good thing, when a business in Southfield can expand and become bigger and better, and, uh, so, you know, we, I have no problem with this site plan, I think it will work out well. Can I, so, Mr. Planner, can we get your recommendation on the site plan?
Yes, thank you. With regard to PSP nineteen dash zero 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 one, the site plan review request of Decorate Construction behalf of the owner, Tomorrow's Star Academy daycare, the Planning Department does recommend favorable consideration of the site plan review request for the following reasons and conditions. Receipt of waivers from the zoning board of appeals for eight point two five feet of landscaping in the front yard, eight point two five feet required, zero feet provided. Four point seven foot east building side yard setback, fifteen feet required, ten point three feet provided. Final detailed landscape plan must be approved by the Planning Department prior to the project being reviewed by the City Council. Exterior lighting will be shielded to prevent spillage of glare into adjacent properties. Petitioners provide a sprinkler system for all landscape areas to encourage preservation of plant material. Petitioners execute a perpetual maintenance agreement for the landscape and parking areas both on-site and in the right-of-way, which includes maintenance of any stormwater detention system. Petitioners to implement the recommendations by the South, made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. Building will be constructed in accordance with the elevations shown on sheet A two dated four two, two thousand nineteen. Approval of the site plan and/or any building elevations represented herein does not constitute nor guarantee approval for signage. Separate approval and sign permits must be obtained from the Building Department for any proposed signs. Bike racks shall be installed in accordance with Article four, section five point two nine, paragraph twelve, and as with the previous item, hours of operation shall be seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, do I have a motion?
Yes, through the chair, I'd like to make a motion, due to favorable recommendation from the Planning Department, that we accept PSP one nine dash zero 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 one?
Support?
I have a favorable recommendation from Commissioner Mia, supported by Commissioner Culpepper, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Through the chair, one abstain.
Thank you, and abstain by Commissioner Willis. Okay, thank you, it moves forward. Next on the agenda, we have PSV nineteen dash zero 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 one.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so this is a request for an alley vacation, to vacate twenty feet of alley located along the rear portion, property is located two zero eight one zero, two zero eight five four, West Eight Mile Road, and two zero seven zero three, two zero seven one one, West Haven. The, the screen you'll notice does show the location of the proposed vacation, so we are on the north side of Eight Mile Road, just west of Evergreen Road. Zoom in a little bit on it, so these are the properties that would be affected by the proposed vacation. It shows both two zero eight one zero, two zero eight five four, and then the two properties to the north of West Haven. As we noted in our study meeting, with vacations of, of property, be it an alley or a street, fifty percent of the, the alley would go, in this case, to the northern portion, fifty percent to the south portion. So with the vacation of this alley, should it go through, ten feet of property would go to the residential to the north, and then the other ten feet to the commercial property to the south. They would also take on the zonings of those particular properties. So in this case, half, the north half of the alley would become R one single-family residential, the south half would become B three general business. This kind of gives an indication as to, again, the location of that alley, it's, it is, if I recall, approximately hundred and seventy feet long, and then twenty feet wide. I'll kind of zoom back out here for a moment.
here for a moment. You'll see, based on the map that we have here, that there's still considerable alley that will remain. So, it goes a number of feet to the east and then a number of feet to the west of this proposed vacation. Some of the comments that the Planning Commission had at the last meeting, study meeting last week, we did have a fire marshal go out and take a look at this particular location. He did respond and stated that as long as the alley was kept unobstructed, to allow at least their fire apparatus to be able to travel to and fro, back and forth on that alley, he was okay with it. So, basically, it would have to remain open. There would be no structures that could be placed within that particular location because they would impede access by the fire department. In addition, we did ask the city's engineer with regard to her comments. There is an easement available, but those utilities go north and south, and they're directly to the east of the building itself, so they're actually not behind the building at all. So, she is fine with this particular location as well in, in the vacation. Finally, there were questions brought up with regard to, in order from the court, with regard to cleaning up of that particular location. My understanding is, one of our city attorneys was out there this afternoon, met with the owner, and there has been some considerable cleanup of that particular back area as well. So, they have been making progress toward cleanup, so we are satisfied that they are moving forward appropriately.
Okay, thank you. Petitioner, please state your name and address for the record.
Good, good, good evening. It's evening now. Sorry, guys. My name is Ali. It's A-L-I-Dagger, D-A-G-H-E-R. I'm an attorney representing the owner. My address is fourteen two zero seven Ford Road, Dearborn, Michigan, four eight one two six.
Okay.
I, I, Mr. Spence is right. We spent a couple, an hour or so earlier today, and the owner of the property made some very significant headway into doing everything necessary to clean up the property.
Okay. Okay, so for the record, just please give us overview of your reasoning for when the vacation of the alley.
Correct, yeah. But, I mean, we, we took it upon ourselves, even though it's not really pertinent to this, we took it upon ourselves to comply with the city requirements as we would otherwise. Okay. Any questions? Sorry, I'm really tired, guys.
If I may, through the chair, I, one of the other items that did come out of the last meeting was whether or not the property owners to the north, the owners of the single-family residential, had signed off. I do have letters from both property owners that they are in agreement and don't have any problem with the vacation of that particular property.
And in fact, they're here today.
Okay, great. That's, that's good. That's good. Okay, it is a public hearing, right? Yeah, so I'd like to take this time to open it to the public. If anybody has any questions, concerns about this project, please step forward. You have three minutes to state, state what you want to say. Okay, seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners, any questions, concerns about this project?
To the chair.
Commissioner Cold Pepper.
Let me say, thank you. The questions that arose in our study meeting, not only have they been answered, they've been documented. And again, my concern was the residence in case when it went to the council, that if someone said they didn't talk to you, then we didn't know. So, thank you for coming out and also sending in a letter. All of, one of my concerns was the containers in the back. Thank you for talking to the attorney. That's not a question about that. You have time to get that done. So, again, appreciate you for stepping forward and answering the question, doing the things that I asked in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Okay, anyone else? Okay, I don't really have a problem with the vacation of the alley. You know, my main concern was really all the trash and debris I saw. I didn't, didn't want it to turn into an alley and looking like an alley. So, I understand you are getting that taken care of. You're cleaning it up, which is great. I think the vacation of the alley will benefit public interest and is not detrimental to traffic circulation or access to any public energy services or, or any similar right-of-way. So, the fire department did give us the okay that there's no issues there, as long as you keep it clear, which was my main concern last week. Wasn't sure about the fire department report, but we do have that report. So, just a matter of keeping the alley clear, and I think we're good. Commissioner Griffiths?
Just a logistics clarification. So, in theory, if you vacate this alley, there could be a fence down the middle of the alley, right, separating the property to the north and the property to the south. Does that in, in fact, impede fire department access?
Well...
Or is there just a special situation, we're gonna document where the fence is gonna be to make it so that you can still drive through?
So...
Or do we need to even worry about this?
Classroom discussion, yes, that could happen. But I believe the applicant is, is seeking quick clean need from the two residents deeding that ten feet to the south. So, there would be no need for a fence. There is an existing wall. The only logistical thing that would be remaining is that technically the ten feet would be zoned residential, and they'd have to come back and get a zoning amendment for that ten feet.
Right, that's our next step, once it's approved. Then we'll figure out what's going on.
Right.
Commissioner Willis?
Through the chair, just from my understanding, I was under the impression that it was the fire marshal that asked for no obstruction.
That's correct.
And that would be offense to me, you know, and so, okay.
We'll, we'll work it out. I mean, whatever it is, whatever's going to be in compliance, yeah, it should be.
Not, not to work out, just from my understanding. I wanted to make sure it was clear.
And, and as I had stated, the B three zoning does not allow outside storage anyways. So, the, the only, the only possibility, there's a fifteen-foot rear yard setback, that in theory, the building could be extended five feet to the north, but then that would impede the twenty-foot access that the fire marshal's looking for. So, it's really just, they've been using the property, that they would now own the property, but they, they can't impede on that twenty feet.
Commissioner Mia?
Just to reiterate what Commissioner Cold Pepper stated, because that was my question last time, would the neighbors be interested in that property? So, thank you as well for the documentation, and I think it makes sense for you to access that alley since you've been using it anyway. I think it makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion? Oh, sorry.
Yep, I can...
City Planner, please.
Yes.
Can we have your recommendation?
With regard to PSV nineteen dash zero 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 one, the reason, the alley vacation request, the Planning Department does recommend favorable consideration to vacate twenty-foot wide public alley, abutting lots forty-eight through fifty-one, tapir's baseline Evergreen sub, subject to the following conditions. Retention of existing easements for maintenance of existing utility lines. Future use of the subject property, including the vacated alley, will be subject to the requirement standards and conditions of the zoning ordinance with regard to outside storage, et cetera. Alley is to remain unobstructed and available to fire apparatus per the Southfield Fire Marshal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Through the chair.
Okay, Commissioner Willis?
I would move for a favorable vote by the commission for PSV nineteen dash zero 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 one.
Second?
I have a favorable recommendation from Commissioner Willis, seconded by Commissioner Mia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it moves forward. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have PSLU nineteen dash zero 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 four.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is PSLU nineteen dash zero 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 four. This is a special use request of Lockmore HOA to amend their plan bylaws and master deed to require minimum standards as defined by the association for properties located within the Lockmore Development. If you recall, this did come before you last week with regard to the proposals for making changes, amendments to square footage of the building as well as materials of the buildings themselves. So, in your packet, we do have the presentation materials that talk about various aspects of this particular project, including on page, let me find it here for you, page thirteen, which does have the control preferences for the developer for the architectural items for this particular project. So, this particular project, again, just for, for the standpoint of the public, this is on Ten Mile Road. Let me go back. So, we're between Telegraph and Lhasa Road, south side of the street. The property itself is just over twelve acres. You can see the circular drive that's currently on the property, as well as a number of existing houses that do currently exist on the property. These are images of what the property looks like right now. Currently zoned R two single-family residential, as is the property directly to the west, property to the east and to the south zoned RE single-family residential. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to the, the architect or the HOA, kind of discuss their particular project here, what they're looking for from the standpoint of amendments to their architectural control preferences.
Okay. Can you please step forward, please? State your name and address for the record.
Good evening again, Planning Commission, Constance Bell, two four six three seven, Pembroke Drive.
Yeah, Kevin Turner, City Build Design Group, three sixty Lincoln Road, City of Ghost Point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so just give a overview of what you want to accomplish here.
At the last meeting, you asked for additional information, more detailed information, so we do have that this evening, and Kevin is gonna explain the information.
And I'd like to speak to Mr. Spence. I just, I received your email a couple hours ago. So, I do have a response to that, and I'd like to clarify that initially, if I may. In terms of the three housing types that you indicated in the email, we basically want, or the HOA basically wants, the new housing to be of similar vernacular design of the existing homes that are there. In regards to the Wexford, the builder that built the, the home that's incomplete, actually, utilized the same name, Wexford, that was Huntley Building, of one of the original homes that were built there back in two thousand five and six.
If I may, through the chair, just for a moment, just from the standpoint of context...
Right, right.
Because you're probably a little confused. Within the, the information that was provided to us on the standards that the HOA was looking for, they mention minimum square footage, and then they give types of house, type one, type two, type three, without any real relation to what houses are we talking about? I mean, that's why I asked the question earlier today about, can they give us some kind of graphic example of the types of houses that, that they're looking for? It's kind of vague just to say type one, type two, type three. If they have specific models in mind, it would probably be better to be part of this presentation and not so vague. So, just from the moment, matter of context, that's where the architect is coming from at this time, is trying to explain the types of houses that I was questioning that they were talking about in their information.
Okay. And actually, I would like to hear it too. If you could just give a overview of why you actually came here and what you're trying to accomplish, just so, I know, we had our study meetings, but just so the public could have an idea of what you're really here for and what you're trying to accomplish.
Certainly. The original developer went out of business, I think it was around year two thousand eleven, twelve, somewhere around there, and therefore, we had no developer. So, the homeowners association became the successor developer. We had three homes that were built that were totally different from the homes, our current homes. And I know some of you drove to our neighborhood. One house in particular is facing the other home. The materials are different, and we wanted homes that are similar to ours, that we can maintain the value and the harmonious look of the current homes. There were two more homes that are being built that are around eighteen hundred and thirty-eight square foot, where our original homes, the smallest is twenty-one, things like twenty-one, one hundred, with the largest being twenty-seven hundred. And the materials are different. The brick, all, all of our homes currently have brick above the garages. The newer homes do not. The value of the homes, like I said, the, I should say, the construction of the homes are totally different from the existing homes, and that was a concern that we had as homeowners. And again, we were advised by the city council because when the current, the original site plan, the top page, the first page of the site plan referred to attachments, but for whatever reason, the attachments, we were told they were uncertain which attachments were attached, even though our homes are the ones that have, that were built. And some of the drawings that I have are pictures of our homes, however, we were told that they may not be the original plans or drawings. Don't understand how that is, but, so, city council advised us to go back through the process and to create new site, new site plan with detailed information so that in the future, we won't have the problems, the existing problems that we're having right now with homes just coming in and just building anything and walking away and affecting the value of our community.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure that helped everyone.
If, if I could, through the chair, this is being done as a special land use because the cluster option was approved as a special land use. And so, you, what we're doing, they're asking for an amendment to the conditions of the special land use with regards to the minimum size of the house, the materials, and so forth. So, we're not changing the site plan.
Right.
But we are changing the special land use conditions with regard to minimum square footages, billing materials, architectural details. And that's what, all we're doing is focusing on an amendment to those specific items.
Right, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else you would like to add?
Um, there was a few things in, in regards to the meeting we had last week, in terms of, one of the commission members mentioned increased construction costs. So, one of the things that we discussed was reducing the preferred square footage of the homes in consideration to the increased building costs present day. And that was the type one, two, and three, in regards to that.
Okay, so, just again, for clarification, what is the minimum square footage you're looking for, if it's less than twenty-one hundred?
Yes, the type one that we discussed, nineteen hundred and fifty minimum?
Okay. I just, again, this is televised. This is a public meeting, and even though we talked about it last week, anybody that wasn't there last week doesn't have the information. So, we, for the record, that we're having this, the minutes are being prepared. We, I just want to be clear, it's nineteen hundred and fifty square feet.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's two homes at nineteen hundred and fifty square feet, and then two homes at twenty-two fifty. I'm sorry, three homes, changed that to three homes, and then three homes, minimum square footage, twenty-four fifty. So, again, that would protect the value of our homes, and it would be harmonious to, so it's not just hodgepodge of the same type of houses and the same square footage.
Okay, so, again, clarification of the remaining eight lots. You, you want a minimum two being nineteen hundred and fifty square feet, three, a minimum of twenty-two fifty, and three, a minimum of two four five oh, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone from the public that has any questions would like to speak on this matter, please step forward. You have three minutes to state your point.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Darren Chase. I live at six one eight one five Bradbury Run in Washington Township, and I am the only lot owner that vacant lots in this community. So, I'm here today to ask that the commission recommend that the city council does not approve this change, and here's why. First, I want to give you some background. I'm not gonna speak to the legal reasons. I brought my legal counsel here to give you some... I brought my legal counsel here to give you some legal background on why you should not recommend approval. I'm going to give you the practical reasons. If you don't already know this, the residents in this subdivision have been complaining against each other and complaining against me as a lot owner for nine years. I've owned lots in the sub for nine years. I've maintained them impeccably. I've been told by your departments that these lots are impeccable. I've been told by your departments that I've been harassed. Complaints coming in about a McDonald's bag that blew onto the lot. I have to run out there and clean it up or somebody is going to come from the city and charge me $200 to pick it up. And yes, I paid a lot of those $200 fines because I didn't get there quick enough. So I want you to know that the history of the subdivision is, is well-known by the people that work within the city. It's, they have a propensity to complain about a lot. That's fine, I get it. But the reason that I'm in this subdivision, right now building homes, I have two going up, brand-new homes, not finished, is because I was asked not to have the other builder build there. And I honored the request of the board to do that. So here I come in to build and all of a sudden, they want to change the game plan in the midstream. I don't need to build here. These are lots that I can sell to other builders. But this change is going to, is going to hamper that. And I have nothing but uncertainty going forward with this board if they, if they make these changes without following the rules. Ever since I've owned these lots, I follow the rules. I pay my dues. I show up at the cleanup, the spring cleanup. I donate flowers for the front. I don't have to do these things, but I do it because I like the people in the community and I care about it. But the board is not following the rules. They don't have the legal authority to make this change. They haven't gone to the residents. The bylaws require a vote of the residents. If this is such a good idea, why aren't they asking the people who live there if it is? Because they don't, they know the answer is they don't want to have the outcome say, they don't want to have this denied. So the board is here unilaterally, acting in, on their own special interest, spending money on attorneys and consultants that this HOA does not have, money that is better spent putting in a topcoat on the road and other things that would enhance the value of the community. So I'm here asking that you deny this request or recommend that the city council deny it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherman Abdo. I, my office at 12900 Hall Road, Suite 403, Sternwood Heights, Michigan, 48313. My phone number is 586-413-7777. I came here on behalf of Mr. Chase today to speak a little bit about the legalities of amendment, an amendment to the master deed that's proposed in front of the council today, in front of the board today. There needs to be two things that happen per the master deed for Lockmore. First, in Article 10, Section 7, they need to have approval of the city of Southfield before recording any amendments that circumvent over the master deed. This amendment was, has already been recorded in September of 2008, so they've already made one violation there. The second violation through the Michigan condominium Act, Section 90A, and through Article 10 of their own master deed states that two-thirds consent of the co-owners for material changes needed to the, to any amendment need to be approved. Therefore, we need to look through the proposed changes. I've looked through a lot of proposed changes and a lot of the amendments that they have are immaterial. They're immaterial in the sense that the developer, its successor, and the association will have certain powers preserved to them throughout the master deed and throughout the bylaws. A lot of these amendments, since the developer is not there, is just erasing the, the developer and having the association now assume those powers since the developer is no longer there. One section in particular in the section at hand is Article 6, Section 3, over architectural control. I want to read to you one part in particular. Section 0 that states is that "The purpose of this section is to assure the continued maintenance of the condominium as a beautiful and harmonious residential development and shall be binding upon both the association and upon all co-owners. Developers' rights under this Article 6, Section 3 may, in the developer's discretion, be assigned to the association or other successor to the developer." Now, at no point has the homeowners association shown us any type of transfer of this power from the developer to the homeowners association. And the proposed amendments to this are to have minimum square footage of the houses being built, whereas throughout this master deed, there is no minimum square footages designated throughout the master deed. Therefore, as a material change to the building conditions of this, of Lockmore, I would ask that it needs to be approval, it needs to have prior approval of all, of at least two-thirds of the owners before it even gets to the point of being brought before this board to be discussed. And additionally, they're not considered a successor developer. Successor developer is an entity that owns either 70% of all homes or either 10 homes located in project that is, the homeowners association does not qualify for neither of those. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tiffany McLean. My address is 24726 Pembroke Drive, Southfield, Michigan. I recently moved into the Lockmore subdivision, excuse me, actually, it'll be a year next week. And part of the reason I did that is because the neighborhood was very, very welcoming, very beautiful, very harmonious. I could see it as, as a very great investment for me and my family. Mr. Chase, I'm not sure if he's still here, has lots adjacent to my property, both of which, the yard has not been cut at all this year. So for him to come up and say, "Oh yes, I take great care of the property and the lots that I own," that is blatantly untrue. Have several pictures, have spoken with the city, trying to get this situation rectified. He stated to the city as of Saturday morning that he would have someone come out either Tuesday or Wednesday to cut the grass. It is Wednesday at 7:45 PM. That has not been done. I do ask that the planning commission actually really consider this because it's our property, it's our property values. It's something that we have all invested and worked very hard to attain. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, also, sir, I still have time? I'm not on the board.
Good evening. My name is Cornell Blandon. I'm at 24712 Pembroke Drive. And I'm a resident of Lockmore. And I'd just like to say that I was board president two years ago and I had rapport with Mr. Chase. But it's, since then, it looks like the subdivision has been trashed by the builders. The lot's horrendous, the grass not cut. The lot next to me has been abandoned. So I've been forced to keep that up myself, cutting the grass, put weed and feed down. The builder across the street that has been working on this house for two or three years now, mounds of dirt, dirt blowing all in my windows, my windows are filthy, driveway is filthy. The, 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 uh, the, uh, drive-through, filthy dirt. The guy that built the roof, bags blew all over the subdivision, all down into the creek. I had to put boots on, climb down there and get all this plastic bags out of the, the, uh, the creek down there. So, nobody is monitoring that, nobody is thinking about Lockmore subdivision. These guys, these builders are coming out here, they're taking forever to finish these homes and they're not cleaning up after themselves and they're not respecting the subdivision. You know, I worked hard to build a rapport with Darren Chase. And he's been over my house, we've talked, but, you know, we've been totally disrespected. And it's time that the city of Southfield stand up and do something for Lockmore subdivision because we're integral part of Southfield and we feel like we're being forgotten. You come out when it's convenient to get our taxes and then we get partial services, little services at all, and then you disappear. You tell us one minute that we don't have control and the next minute that you got control. So I'm here today to stand as a member to say that we would like to see some control that, that we can exert as a homeowners association over the types of building processes that go on and, and the length of time and the control, the contractors, the, in terms of cleaning up, maintaining. We got holes in the, in the road from, from trucks coming in and out of there. So it's just hell to skelter. And I think that something needs to be done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Vicki Neal. I reside at 24667 Pembroke Drive. I'm a board member of the Lockmore Homeowners Association and I want to state for the record that I am in total agreement for the amended site plan to revise the sizing in our community. It's unfortunate that smaller homes were built and now we're forced to build even smaller homes to keep this harmonious look in our community. I also would like it known that the reason that the bylaws were revised initially was because the two homes that went up that were not harmonious, that were smaller, that did not have the brick at all, we had to fight to even get the first level brick, had to bring out the bylaws because they were trying to just put up anything that they wanted. So, as a board of the member, as a, excuse me, I do get nervous, but as a member of the board, we felt like it was our responsibility to enforce the bylaws for the people in our community and ensure that homes for the future were harmonious. And that's why we went ahead and became successor developers. We hired our attorney and we had a vote. We have meetings and any decisions we make are always considering the homeowners. They, if you don't attend the meetings and you don't vote, then that is unfortunate. But we always make sure we have the percentages that are required. And so far, we have met those. We did not realize that was that question. We'd be glad to validate that. I'm not out of time yet.
Yeah, you got a little bit of time left.
Well, basically, that, that's it. I just wanted you to know that I am in agreement and we're doing what's best for our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Deborah Donald. I reside at 24653 Pembroke Drive, Southfield, Michigan. And I just want to speak up on behalf of our subdivision and I am in agreement with the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Pamela Juro, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 2483460439. I'm not a homeowner in Lockmore, but I almost was. In 2013, I went looking to buy a house in Lockmore and someone had an offer on the home and I got a little discouraged and I went elsewhere. I'm concerned about, first of all, the developer getting before this honorable body with an attitude criticizing the residents about what I consider personal business within the subdivision. Whether or not they click and get along is not your business here and it's not his business. What's important is the process by which you finish the development in this subdivision. When you talked about how well and the maintenance of it, don't forget, a couple of years ago, there was an oil leak in this subdivision right near where the house was that I wanted to buy. So we don't know what caused it, but it happened. I didn't check to see what the resolve was, but that was an issue and it was an environmental issue. Now, you keep quoting through the chair, the builder, all of these different sections, Article 10, Section 7, and you talk about the master deed. If you decide to get back up here, quote and tell me what the master deed says about when you make a change from the initial site plan, what is the process? So if the initial site plan says that the houses are to be 2,100 square feet to 2,700 square feet, under what auspice are you allowed to make that change? I would report that it would require some kind of amendment. You can't just say, "I'm gonna do it" and put it in the master deed and then say, "Oh, I'm not gonna do it." And the fact that you've had to change from what you initially did says a whole lot. It says the economy, it says the people moving in there. But one thing that's really important, it's not necessarily about you, the builder, and how many lots you have. It's about the residents that took their hard-earned dollars.
You may want to wrap it up with about 15 seconds.
But I don't need you to tell me that because I'm watching the clock. And the fact that you do that, you're taking my seconds away. So you know I've been speaking for 36 years and I know the process. Now you took two of my seconds away.
Okay, well, you got two seconds put back.
Okay, so what I'm going to do and finish my statement, and I would just encourage you to be respectful to me. You may not like what I'm saying, but I'm a clock watcher, I speak extemporaneous, and I can count three minutes in my head. What I'm saying here is he has to be cognizant of the people that invested their hard-earned money into this subdivision.
Thank you, time's up. Thank you.
And I'm gonna ask you, don't do that again.
Okay, well, thank you, your time's up.
But don't interrupt me again.
Everybody gets three minutes.
Let me watch my clock.
You know there's anybody else.
Okay, let me watch my clock and don't interrupt me.
Everyone gets three minutes.
I don't need you to remind me how much time I have when I'm watching the clock respectfully.
Okay, you need to follow the rules.
I don't need you to tell me I have 15 seconds when my 15 seconds is not over.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
It's not a testosterone and estrogen struggle. Do you and be the chair, let me watch the clock and get my three minutes.
Thank you, you got your three minutes. Anyone else?
No, I didn't get it, but I will yield to you, I will act as to you. Because you got the power.
Come on, come to the front, please.
Good evening. My name is Jessie Johnson and I live in the Losmore community and I agree with the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Pauline Donald. I reside at 24647 Pembroke Drive. And I also agree with the site plan and I'm not a member. I'm a board member.
Thank you.
My name is Connie Reno. Good, good evening and I am the construction consultant for.
Okay, your address?
HOA. I live in Detroit, Michigan, at the Lofts in Detroit. This, to me, is all about adherence. Adherence to the site plan, the master deed, the bylaws. They have been violated by Mr. Chase. I have advised them to become the successor developer. They have done so and registered it in Oakland County. Adherence, compliance, that's what this is about. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I declare the public meeting closed. Commissioners, any cautions, concerns? Commissioner Denson.
Thank you. Terry or the staff, what, I mean, how does the proposed amendment, amendments compare to the original site plan?
Again, the, there was no minimum square footages that were part of the original cluster option approval as far as conditions of approval. There was only a requirement to have brick on the first floor around four sides. Four of the lots located on the northeast corner were limited to a story and a half. And basically, those were the three regulatory requirements that were made conditions of the architecture. And so, since there was not definitive clarification on those items, that's over time, that's where I think some of the issues have come to play. of the issues have come to play. And they therefore are amending the special use conditions so that we're clear on the minimum size square footages, the brick requirement, the architectural details of buildings moving forward. So, this would apply to the eight or nine lots that have not been developed yet.
And in terms of the original site plan, do you have the original site plan?
Yes, we have the, we have the original site plan. There's no changes to the site plan. We're just talking about changes to the special use conditions of the cluster option. And since this was done as a cluster option, there was building envelopes. So, as long as the building fits within those setback requirements that created the building envelope, then that they, they can build whether it's twenty-one hundred square feet or twenty-seven hundred square feet. They still have to meet the, there was, I think, a perimeter fifty-foot setback. There was a twenty-foot setback from the road and then there was a separation between building sites. So, unlike a platted subdivision where you would have specific setbacks from property lines, this was building envelope.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Willis.
I have a couple of questions of Mr. Chase, am I good? Mr. Chase, you shared with us during your brief statement that you had owned property for nine years and that you had waited during this entire nine years before you built anything. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Was your delay caused by a writing? Did you get a writing from someone that says, you know, "Please don't build now, build, you know, in two thousand and eighteen"?
No, I was waiting for the market to come back to start out with. And the only reason I decided to build now in this subdivision is because about twelve months ago, I had a meeting with the board here in the bill, in the municipal building. They asked me not to have the other builder, not to sell any more lots to the other builder, and they gave me their rationale. I agreed to that. And so, the houses that they're talking about that they had problems with are the three houses the other builder built. They are not the ones I'm building. My houses are quality. They're, they're bigger, for one.
I, I just needed to know about the delay. It, it is your statement that the city of Southfield approved of this plan originally. Would you have any concern with the city of Southfield approving of a site plan now? Are, would they have the authority to do that?
Well, the city of Southfield has the authority to approve a plan, certainly. My legal counsel and I have, have, I disagree with the premise that, number one, that they are successor developer, that the HOA is not successor developer. That's an act that you just can't bestow on, on yourself. There's a, there's a legal process involved in doing that. They failed to follow that.
Then, then, my understanding is this matter is also in litigation?
It's prob- well, I've been told that, that there's legal action that they're taking and their attorney told me I was going to receive it two weeks ago. If I don't receive it soon, it will end up in litigation, yes.
Okay. But, but your understanding is that they cannot become successor developers, even though it's abandoned by the original developer?
They can become successor developer if they follow the proper course of action, which is to seek that approval from a court of competent jurisdiction. They did not. They just said, "We're successor developer."
Okay.
And there's nothing in the law that automatically transfers it to them, even though the developer went out of business.
Okay. And that is to be determined, in your view, by a court?
Yes.
Okay. Lastly, just not to belabor these points, you, you cited the condo act and you said that it takes two-thirds consent of owners before a site plan could be presented to council. Am I, am I reading that right?
That's correct. The bylaws call for a two-thirds majority for any changes.
Are you suggesting that the board itself would not constitute two-thirds members of the condo?
I'm, yes, I'm suggesting that.
Okay, okay. That's what I need to know. Thank you.
And for the record, I have asked the board to sit down with me and come up with a plan that we can mutually agree upon where we don't need lawyers, we don't need to go through this process. I'm open-minded, but I feel like this is another form of harassment and that my future is uncertain if I continue to let this happen.
Okay, thank you.
Set. Thank you. Commissioner Griffiths.
Just had some general observations to things that are jumping out at me as, as odd or, or not consistent in this document. And then I have a lot of questions. One, minor, it says a survey must be prepared by a registered engineer or surveyor. And then it further continues on to say a dimensioned site plan must be, and it only says registered engineer. This seems to be double cost, double burden on whoever's gonna build a home in here. And it's my understanding with a new house that a surveyor's license will do both, you know, in their professional scope of, of liability, a surveyor is allowed to do both the site plan and the topographic survey. A registered engineer may not be licensed to do the topographic survey, so it just seems inconsistent with me. It may not even matter. One other, just really weird minor thing, all fascia construction and rakes to be rough-sawn pine painted. Doesn't give you the option of cedar or redwood or other quality woods. It doesn't give you an option of, uh, an engineered product that would be water-resistant. So, to me, rough-sawn pine is peeling paint in two years, which goes against this quality image that is trying to be set forth here. And then, there's a, there's a, you must use vinyl siding and it must be this shape and it must be, the thickness, I think, is okay, but just odd, odd standards of things that are zeroing in. The, the amount of brick makes sense. That's, that's a certain amount of quality level to me. The, the square footed, I said, I have a lot of questions here. When in the city of Southfield, I'm not aware of any instances in the city of Southfield that would review the architectural style of a residential house. How is the building department with all the building inspectors of recent or retired, I'm not even sure who some of the new inspectors are, how are they supposed to know that they're even supposed to be reviewing a plan to a certain amount of standard and denying it or seeking an additional approval from a condominium association?
Well, in, in this particular case through the chair, we, we don't have a lot of cluster options. On, on individual, single-family homes, with the planning department, it never goes to council, as long as they meet the district requirements. But because this is a cluster option and the purpose was to relax the dimensional requirements of the underlying zoning district to preserve woodlands, wetlands, or, in this case, there's also steep slopes. So, as part and parcel to that, this was a contract, basically, on the layout of the residential subdivision. It could be planted, it could be done by a condominium. Those are just ownership types. But through the, through the course of that, this, it is run through a special use, so these conditions of architectural style and materials were, were put in place back, back when it was originally approved. The problem was, there wasn't enough clarification, even though there was a lot of discussion through the process, there wasn't enough clarification on the actual building type. So, the building department, when issuing a permit, first looks at the minimum square footage of the district, unless it has special conditions similar to this cluster option. And that's flagged in our system. They know which subdivisions or special cluster options are flagged, and then they refer to those conditions.
And where I was going with that, could, could someone have, in theory, got approved for a substandard design just because it slipped through the cracks or maybe it wasn't even a rule? Maybe it was a perceived rule?
I mean, it's always possible, but what happened, I believe, is the building official didn't have clarification on minimum square footage and had to refer back to the, the underlying zoning district. So, if it was above a thousand square feet-
Right.
And it met all the other requirements, he had to issue a permit.
Just a couple more items. The, I'm confused as how in practicality you enforce two houses at this size, three houses at this size, and two houses at this size, or whatever the ratio is. And if you're last in line, you're essentially penalized financially. Your house costs more. Maybe you're last in line, your house costs more, but the value around you is, is risen to your level, so it's, it's, it's not as big of a issue. Just, again, a practicality of how, how would that really work in, in real life? And then I brought up just the increased square footage costs in general of construction and how, how it affects these minimum square footages. I don't know if, maybe you can explain or, or, or give me a theory of what was the, without, without your whole business model on the line here, but, you know, is, there was a, I'm, I'm sure, assumed construction cost and assumed sale price, assumed profit margin for your business, as is your right. What's changed? How's that different? How does this, it, it sounds like it's penalizing you in a way. I guess if-
Well, the two speculative homes that I'm building now, that are probably sixty days from completion, are eighteen-hundred-and-fifty square feet. The previous three homes were smaller. I felt that the market had, there was more demand for slightly bigger square footage home, but the days of the twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot homes are, are really gone by. Now, maybe they'll come back at some point, but right now, the demand is for homes around the nineteen-hundred to twenty-one-hundred square foot because there's nobody building affordable housing. I'm the only one building housing that's affordable. And, and, you know, the, the, the land costs are so high, the, the cost of construction materials is so high, everything's going up so much, the cost of labor goes up, has gone up so much that nobody can afford to build. The only reason I can afford to build these houses is because I own the lots. And so, I'm, I'm monetizing the lots into my profit margin, even though if I sell these lots today, I might break even. So, this is not a boondoggle for me. This is, I have to build on these, on these lots in order to fulfill my obligation to the community, but also to monetize the lots. And I hope that answers your question that this is, I'm trying to build what the public wants. If the public wanted something else, I'd be happy to build it.
So, yeah, if I, if I come to you and I say, "I want a three-thousand-square-foot house," you say, "I'd be happy to do it at X, Y, Z price to these standards?"
Yes, a hundred percent. Yep.
Yeah, thank you. That does-
Okay.
That kind of explains what I was trying to get at. And then, I guess, my other option I see is you do nothing. You just sit. Maybe pay your taxes, maybe cut the grass, and I don't think that is gonna help their subdivision.
Looks like an abandoned community.
Exactly.
You know.
Well, I'm, I'm just, again, stating out loud, so-
Yeah.
Maybe the large size and the higher quality does force that, just financially, economically.
It for sure would, because it's not only, not only the cost of construction, but the price that you'd have to sell the home at, would it even, is, is it something that we could obtain an appraisal on? You know, so you'd have to sell homes for more than they're gonna appraise for. And people can't, I, I would be unwise to buy a home in that situation, but most people don't have the difference to cover the gap between the sale price and the appraised value, which they'd have to do under that scenario. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Willis.
Thank you. Ms. Bell, is it possible to speak with you again?
Yes, yeah. Stay there.
Thank you. I can't tell you how much you're helping me out with this. So, first question is, you are the successor builder, and I'm using a generic you because I'm not sure who you are at this point. Am I correct?
Yes, Lockmore HOA is the successor developer.
So, the entire board of the association is a part of that?
The entire association.
Okay.
The entire, all the homeowners in the association.
Can you tell me how many homes there are in the association?
Twenty-three.
How many members of, how many homeowners are members of that board?
All. All homeowners.
Okay. And that notion of it takes two-thirds consent of the owners, I, I'm going to assume you tabulate the numbers when you have votes. Do you know if you've had two-thirds votes of the owners in support of this?
Yes, also, the Beth, I'm not sure of her last name, of the law department-
City attorney.
The city attorney presented, had a whole presentation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I'm not sure if everyone was here for the planning commissioner for city council, where modification to existing condominium documents, as long as it's no material change, the board has the authority to become the successor developer. And as I said before, there was a lawsuit which I presented to the city council and I believe to the planning commission, that Darren Chase, through a lawsuit, was deemed not the successor developer.
Okay, okay.
And so, we had to have someone so that people just couldn't come in to our community and just do anything.
Okay, okay. I'm comfortable. Thank you.
Just for clarification, there's twenty-three homes that have been built.
Correct.
There's thirty-four total lots.
Yes, minus the one that the oil will, the oil will-
Yeah, I just wanted-
Yes.
Make sure that the commission understands there are additional lots that make up the homeowners' association.
But those lots would not have people that own them who are members of the subdivision board because they're vacant. So, I, I just wanted to know what percentage of the members in existence are in sort of support-
Well, twenty-three of the thirty-four homes works out to be sixty-seven percent.
Right. And I want to reiterate that-
Hundred percent of the twenty-three. Okay.
To the chair.
Okay, Commissioner Cole, come here.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Ms. Bell, to me, as I said in the study meeting, I, I've been with you in all of your requests to the city council and understand that there are quite a few things that people really don't know behind this situation, what got lost, what was said, what wasn't said.
Yes.
I want to piggyback before I get into my dissertation about the residents. There are twenty-three currently owned homes in that area, right?
Correct.
Are all twenty-three of those owners part of your association?
Yes.
So, you do have two-thirds quote vote on what you want to do with this amendment?
Correct.
Okay, possible.
Okay.
Okay, I, I just want, I, I take note, same thing as Mr. Willis said, that you needed two-thirds vote to bring it and you just wasn't acting on the board with five or six members doing something that the other residents were against.
Correct.
Okay, one thing that stood. Second is, you know, to me, I, I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, but I like harmony and I like formality. I think, this is just my humble opinion, that what you're trying to do in this neighborhood is have harmony. I don't know if I would want to move into a neighborhood that had twenty-three houses one way and these two other houses on the corner and this other house is a different way. Property value, whatever, again, I, I'm not an architect. If I was an architect, I would build the house according to how you wanted me as the developer. I don't think I should come in and build the house the way I want it. If I'm coming into your vicinity, your condo, you should tell me how you want your house, house built. That's why I'm in accord with the homeowners' association taking over a hundred percent ownership of the houses and stuff to go in your community.
Yes.
That way, we won't have the issues that we've had with the building department, with whoever that you said, I think, I'm not gonna speak for you, but some of your complaints, you haven't gotten the information that you wanted it because things have changed.
Correct.
Things fall through the crack, but once you own it, you can't come back to the city or anybody and say, "I didn't do this, I didn't do that." Now, I have aptly for the gentleman that has owned this property for nine years or however, the developer didn't develop it because of the market. That's an architectural thing. That's a financial thing. You know, whether you want to build now or wait, that's personal. Just like this is, to me, is personal that you're taking it and your residents are saying, "We want to own this. We want to take it under our control and we want to have harmony and we want to have proximity in our division." That's why I'm in favor of this amendment. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Martin.
Has the homeowners' association approved any plans for any new home construction in your-
Commissioner Martin, unfortunately, we haven't even, the protocol was not followed. Anyone who comes into our community, they're, they're supposed to come through the association. No one came through the association at all. And the first houses that were built, Mr. Chase brought the builder in and introduced him to the community. They never approved any of the houses. He referred to the master deed, which, of course, we understand that the city does not have to enforce that. That's a contract between the homeowners' association and the builder. Nothing-
nothing was followed. His attorney mentioned the architectural control, nothing was followed. They're supposed to submit plans to the association for review, that wasn't followed. A landscape plan, a construction schedule, a fee, just in case, but right now, we have so many potholes from all the different trucks that came in, nothing was followed. It was totally disregarded. A builder just came in and just started building anything, without our authorization, without our approval. And as far as the square footage of the houses, eighteen hundred, the smallest home is nineteen, it's over nineteen hundred feet, so for eighteen hundred, that's the smallest house, which they're building now. And the last house that was sold, was sold three-hundred-and-fifty thousand, it was a twenty-seven-hundred-square-foot house.
Anyone else?
One more question. It sounds like there's either allegations of pending lawsuits, or, I don't even know if this applies to us, are we even talking about things that matter to the planning commission?
Well, I, let's just try to, the master deed is a private issue between the homeowners' association, the lot owners, the builders. They have their own set of rules. They can't supplement any city's standards, they can be above, but not less. But we only can enforce what the city approves. So, tonight, I ask you to just focus on the amendment to the special use requirements dealing with the architecture. All this other stuff is germane to them, but it's outside the purview of the city. Okay? They have their own set of regulations and requirements that the builders have to follow, and that's for them to enforce, but as I said, for whatever reason, back when this got approved, there wasn't enough clarification on the minimum building square footage. The architectural details were limited to brick on the first floor, and then there was four lots that were designated only a story and a half because of a compromise with the adjacent subdivision. So, we're just asking you to focus on their requests of these typologies in minimum square footage, their architectural details, and their building styles. The site plan itself is not being changed.
Commissioner Martin.
If I understand you correctly, the site, the information that we're looking at will have exactly no impact on the three houses that are under construction.
That's right, this is for the nine undeveloped lots or any future homes, eight. This is for future development.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dinsley. Thank you. Do you have any pictures that you can include, so that it will be clear what type of housing should be built?
Yeah, if I may through the chair, that was a question that I had posed to the architect earlier. So, Mr. Turner, if you could, again, specify, if you could refer to, I do know that in your packet, there are numerous housing types in here, so if you could refer to-
Just a minute. Were you finished, Jeff, or?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay. Okay, do the commission members have that entire package I provided to you, all nineteen pages? Okay, the original four homes that were built, that were, that are presently built, it's our, my understanding is that those homes, and variations of those homes, would be built throughout the entire development. Okay, when I say variations, I mean different elevation styles. I'm sorry?
Look, Chair, can we get a page to the chair?
Page five.
Referring, which asked, refer to the page, Chair, to the chair.
Okay. Page number you're speaking of?
I can't, I don't understand stuff. Fifteen?
Oh, there we go. Page five.
Nope, nope.
He said five, but fifteen.
None of these, none of them changed. The original development.
Okay.
Which, these, the package that I forwarded to you, gave you ten copies?
Page ten.
Page ten?
Yeah.
It may be page ten, your-
Oh, five scrolls.
There may be some additional pages that were added.
Right there.
There we go. Those are the model homes that were proposed and built on the site. The understanding is that the vernacular of those homes, there will be variations in elevation, style, usage of particular materials throughout the entire development, if all thirty-four homes had been built. The HOA wants the remaining sites to be built of the same design, similar design, vernacular, architectural detail, orientation, and size. Okay? So, the understanding is that any future home, or the preference is, any future home will follow these particular characteristics.
However, just for clarification, you have stated three, two homes at nineteen hundred and fifty square feet, three homes at twenty-two fifty, and three at twenty-four fifty, which is different than what's shown up there.
Correct, and that's in response to the increased building cost, it's a consideration of that.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear that you want the architectural style, but at these square footages.
Correct.
So, will we have a, a, a different, updated?
We will have an updated attachment going forward to council. If you recall, last week, there was a minimum request of twenty-one hundred square feet, and then based on the comments of Mr. Griffiths and myself, saying, "Please review what the costs and the implications are," tonight, they're coming forward with this twenty-one fifty, twenty-two fifty, and twenty-four fifty. So, as a condition of your approvals, should you do that, we will have to update these plans going forward to council, because we want no ambiguity as we move forward. And again, I, you know, it's hard to look back in the past, determine what happened, but there were a number, from the first application, there was a number of different housing styles that were discussed throughout the process, but they weren't tied to the final approval. And we want to make sure that we're as clear as we can be moving forward.
All right. If I may through the chair, just to Mr. Turner. So, on the subsequent pages, your page six, your page seven, you can flip to those, at least within the packet, it's page six and page seven, which actually depicts the existing homes within Lockmore right now.
Correct.
Yeah, page six and page seven. So, would you agree that these kind of go along with page ten, or the previous page, and then these also? The reason I'm getting into that is because, as Mr. Crowden had noted, when it comes to actually putting down conditions, if you're going to state, and we're going to state within the conditions, that we're going to have types one, two, and three, and that these particular houses are the ones that you were seeking, I want to make sure to reference those in my conditions, that it'll be types one, two, and three, similar to sheets, A, B, and C, or five, six, and seven. Okay, thank you.
So, it's going to be the Bristol Lockmore, the Amherst Lockmore, the Dublin Lockmore, and the Wexford Lockmore?
Correct.
But with the revised minimum square footages?
Square footages, correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Griffiths.
I'm still just having a problem with all these square footage requirements, I just think it's, so here's my suggestion, feel free to ignore me, everybody else up here, whatever you want to do. Two at nineteen fifty, that's a couple affordable quote-unquote houses, there's still going to be three-hundred-and-fifty grand to build, or to sell. And then, why the step in, say, twenty-one hundred to twenty-four hundred? So, if you want to build bigger, go ahead, you're free, but a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot house is, we're building a lot of twenty-two-hundred-square-foot houses right now. I can't believe I'm taking square footage off the table, that's not my job, that's not what I, that's not the way I want to operate, but from a building point of view, I think a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot house is a good-sized house, and it will likely tick upward with everyone that gets in and customizes their floor plan, but then this, that alleviates this who goes first, and, "Oh, I missed it, now I got to pay a penalty cost," and all that kind of thing. It seems like a lot of moving parts here. A twenty-five-hundred is a pretty large minimum size, if, I'd be curious how many, there's a lot of twenty-one-hundred-square-foot numbers on these examples, so now we're four-hundred square-foot bigger, another eighty grand in construction, or sales cost right there, seems like a lot to me.
I think the, may I speak? I think the reasoning behind that was to show that we want homes of varying style, not sort of copied in these unbuilt, on these unbuilt sites.
Right.
So, varying styles. Now, maybe the square footage, maybe we're going to have a minimum, and a, you know, a middle-of-the-road maximum, I'm going to have to discuss with the HOA, but this is what their preferences were.
Again-
And we're not necessarily limited to two, three, and three.
Well, that's the way it was stated. And again, I think what we're, we will respect whatever you want, but I think what we're trying to do is, if you say minimum twenty-one hundred square feet, or whatever it is, the market will dictate if people want bigger.
Right.
The maximum will be dictated by your building foot envelope.
Right.
You're not going to be able to build a five-thousand-square-foot house, just because you don't have the building envelope for that. If, I think what I hear from Mr. Griffiths is, if you say two at nineteen fifty, and then the remainder at a minimum square footage, twenty-one hundred or above, that's probably going to be in line with the majority of the homes there anyways. But we don't want to put words in your mouth, in your mouth, but since we have to make a definitive recommendation, and again, council will have the final say-
Correct.
We would like to give as best direction to council as we can, that does not preclude you from raising these issues with council, but our job is to get it as complete as possible moving forward.
Okay.
And again, we want to respect what the desires of the homeowners' association is. I think we're just, some of us are saying, "Don't paint yourself in a corner," and then you can't get it built because the market won't support it. And still respect that you need, you're looking for a minimum size in scale and quality moving forward. But right now, on the table, you've got two at nineteen fifty, three at twenty-two fifty, and three at twenty-four fifty, with those four building styles.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's what, that's what the recommendation would be.
Okay. Commissioner Dinsley, you have a question?
No, just suggestion. I agree with, I mean, Commissioner Griffin, you know, if you do a minimum, and the market will dictate the minimum, the minimum and above, you still have what you wanted in terms of the style, I mean, the square footage. And I'm just concerned that if the market does not dictate twenty-seven hundred, and it's going to be, you know, vacant, you know, I'm just concerned, if all of the others lots are taken, and now you only have one that's, that's, you know, you dictated twenty-seven hundred, and nobody is buying-
Well, it's twenty, we indicated twenty-four fifty, I believe.
Twenty-four fifty would be the largest.
Well, I'm just, yeah. I'm thinking, and it's just my suggestions with, and I agree with Commissioner Griffin, that a minimum of whatever and above, that's-
Commissioner Griffiths?
And to complement your wording, on the other side of the equation here, I understand what you mean now, when you say the vernacular, and the scale, and the style, and you give me four examples, now I can, now I can design a house to complement that. So, I think that wording is strong and good, and I don't want to be all negative all the time. So, I think that makes sense to me, I understand what you're going for, it speaks a language. If we get an actual document in there, date, page, you know, then it's enforceable to me, because it's, it's a-
Well, would it be, why doesn't it maybe suggest a, a higher minimum, and then what the market will bear?
Up to you, I just thought there was a lot of variety.
Okay, I have one question, I really want to clarify. So, did you guys actually have a vote with the members? Did all the members vote for this?
We had a meeting with the members that were eligible to vote, however, the board, based on the information from the other homeowners, the board had the authority to vote, as far as becoming the successor developers, because there was no material change. We had it done through an attorney, we had it recorded with everyone who was eligible, because there are some people who are not in good standing, therefore, they were not eligible to vote. But this is something that most of the homeowners wanted.
So, you did have a vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, what was the percentage of the vote? Do you have that number?
I don't have the people, but again, the board has the authority to vote for this, and five out of five, well, we only had four at the time, four board members voted in favor of Lockmore Homeowners' Association becoming the successor developer.
Okay, so the board voted, but the residents never really had an opportunity to chime in?
We had input from the, we had input from the homeowners. Generally, we have more homeowners than this, but they have the concerns, and we represent the association, they have the same concerns about the value of our homes and the homes that were going up.
If I could, through the chair, Ms. Bell, given, given all the, I think everybody's here trying to help, given all the discussion, do you still want to move forward with the three different minimum types, or would you consider the two at nineteen fifty, and let's say, all the other ones at above a certain minimum?
One of the things is, the home sites that are not built are contiguous, they're right pretty much close to one another. So, what you may get is a series of homes at nineteen hundred square feet throughout that half of the site, development.
Right.
We're trying to avoid that kind of, we'd rather have a mix per second.
Right, okay, I just, but you could also say two at nineteen fifty, and let's say, for example, the rest over twenty-one hundred.
Yeah.
And then, you're likely to get not everything built at twenty-one hundred, you might get somebody who'd be willing to build at twenty-three hundred, you might get someone at twenty-one fifty. You've got four different styles, so there's different options. We just don't want you to paint yourself in the corner that they become vacant lots. And we're also trying to respect the fact that you have a certain minimum square footage, that you want to maintain your quality, and you want to maintain your value. And we just, whatever your request is, we'll consider it, but I think there's been some good comments about not painting yourself in a corner here.
Well, originally, we wanted all the homes to be at least twenty-one hundred square foot, because we do want, like I said, we don't want to lessen the value of our homes.
Right.
We want to make sure, we just had a home that sold, as I said, three-fifty for twenty-seven hundred, the one prior to that was twenty-four fifty for three-hundred thousand. So, we want to make sure that our values increase, so we don't have a problem with saying the minimum is twenty-one hundred.
Okay. With the two at nineteen fifty, or everything at twenty-one hundred?
No, then we'll do everything at twenty-one hundred and above.
Okay.
The minimum.
That's, that's fine, we just, based on the comments, I want to make sure we're all clear-
Yes.
That what we will move forward is the four building styles with a minimum twenty-one hundred square feet.
Yes.
Okay, in closing, one great thing about condo ownership is that you share the load of ownership, okay? That load is really carrying for the value of your assets, which includes- That load is really carrying for the value of your assets, which includes the common areas, the grounds, and everything included outside the condo. So, you, you're taking ownership, and that's why I asked about the vote for the other members, because they also are part of this ownership, so hopefully, they're on board also. Some people's desires are not everyone's desires. Some may want a little bit more affordable housing connected. But the main thing is, you got to be, you know, stay flexible, stay understanding and flexible. You want a good, healthy association. You want to make sure people chime in and vote, and get involved in this conversation. A lot of what we hear today is really maintenance issues, which we're not really here for, but you do have a big problem there. That's not something we can do much about here, but a lot of maintenance issues there, which, which is a whole different subject. We're here to really talk about the minimum standards that you're trying to change. But, but, you know, the homeownership is important, and it's important to your value, and you guys are doing the right thing by trying to keep your values up in the association. So, I do applaud you for what you're trying to do here. I got a feeling it's going to be a legal battle in court, but you definitely making the right step as far as coming here first and moving on to the city council. Okay, so, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Excuse me.
Commissioner Martin?
You mentioned that there are twenty-three homes, and their four board members also stated that there were residents that weren't eligible to vote. How many residents aren't eligible to vote?
At the time, um, I think it was three, two or three.
Four.
Sorry, four.
So, in essence, then, you had fifteen that were in favor of the twenty-three?
Yes.
I just wanted to be able to look at the percentage that were...
That would be nineteen. If there's twenty-three homes and four were not eligible, that would leave nineteen.
Yeah, minus the four board members.
They, they have a right to vote.
Okay, can I get a recommendation from the city planner?
Yes, thank you. Just for a clarification, the documents that you have were actually renumbered, because some of the documents like, had like a four A, B, C, so they are labeled one through nineteen. So, as I read through the recommendations, I will actually be referring to, the new numbers are at the bottom of the sheets that you have, just for clarification purposes. So, with regard to PSLU nineteen dash zero 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 four, this is a special use request of Lockmore HOA to amend their plan bylaws and master deed to require minimum standards as defined by the association. The planning department does recommend favorable recommendation with the following conditions. Presentation packet for PSLU nineteen dash zero 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 four dated May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, sheets one through nineteen is to be included as a part of this approval. Minimum square footage of the remaining eight home sites to be built, in consideration in respect to the increased construction cost present day typical residential building rates, will meet and/or exceed the minimum square footage of twenty-one hundred square feet. This will include a minimum of three different house styles with alternative elevation variations and grouping configurations. Additionally, home sites number three and four, the maximum height must be one and a half stories, as identified per original approved special use and site plan, and the original Lockmore master deed, sheets ten through twelve as examples. The facade, the facade is to include brick, columns, porches, and garage face to the gable ridge equivalent, and a corresponding in pattern, color, and design to the original homes within the existing development, including first-floor brick facade around perimeter on all four, I'm sorry, on all new homes. All windows must be equivalent in style, orientation, and quality to existing homes built in two thousand five and thereup until two thousand fifteen, see sheets ten through twelve for examples. All vinyl siding must conform to specification zero four four inches thickness, double four Dutch lap, certainty or Vitac or equivalent. All fascia construction and racks to be rough sawn pine painted. Roof and dormer shingles must be architectural thirty-year dimensional asphalt, three brands, GFA, IKO, Tampco or equivalent. Aluminum gutters installation, four-inch case style with aluminum rectangular downspouts. Orientation of building siding should meet the site parameters as indicated on the original site plan, prude dated by the City of Southfield, September nineteenth, two thousand three. Clear view from front of home to street must be maintained. Equivalent building vernacular, scale, architectural contacts, compatible, compatible color, including brick, painted surfaces, and trim features to be relevant and coherent and consistent to the existing homes must be maintained. Observance, when most applicable, of building placement in regards to front building setback uniformity with all existing built homes. Related to the proposed build-out of the remaining home sites within the Lockmore Cluster Development, the Lockmore HOA will not approve the continuation and completed build-out of the following home types. Pembroke Home Style, The Williams, or any corresponding name if applicable. The Huntley Building Style One, The Wexford, or any corresponding name if applicable, or if applicable, see page eighteen. The Huntley Building Style Two, The Irvington, or any corresponding name if applicable, see page seventeen. Thank you.
And through the Chair, I just want to get clarification from Mr. Spence, just so, and, and the architect. Page ten here has four different styles, the Amherst, the Bristol, the Dublin, and the Wexford. You referenced three styles?
They referenced three styles.
Is, is that your intent, just three styles, or are you looking for the four styles? Ms. Turner?
Page ten.
Could you come up to the microphone?
Yes, for, yes, for, yes. This should be the three-star, page eleven, it's always been three styles.
So, again, there's, there's four, there's four styles showing on this sheet and what was built, the Wexford, the Dublin, the Bristol, and the Amherst. But yet, there was a reference to only three styles, and then I heard an exclusion to a Wexford, but it might not be the same Wexford as being shown here.
No, that was, that name was utilized again on one, on the three home.
The name was. But, but your intent, according to sheet ten and these pictures, is to allow these four styles, correct?
Yes.
So, the reference to three styles should be four styles, and then specifically, these four types?
Yes.
Okay, that's again, we want to be crystal clear on this.
Okay.
Okay. So, planning commission understands that, that, that condition has been amended in our recommendation?
Okay. Thank you for pointing that out, Chair, yes, very important.
Maybe you just stay there until we take our vote. The Rex, as, as shown, as shown up here.
Right, we got, we got to say a question.
So, what I would suggest is, you take a motion, and we can have further discussion after the motion.
Okay, can I get a motion, Commissioners?
To the Chair.
Commissioner Culpepper.
I recommend favorable recommendation for PSLU one nine dash zero zero four with this...
Support.
Okay, I have a favorable motion from Commissioner Culpepper, seconded by Commissioner Willis. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Question, I'm not opposed, question.
Okay.
Going back to looking at what we just said about the four houses you got, when we look, and this is maybe my English, when we looked at page eleven, you got, you got Amherst, Bristol, Dublin, and Oxford.
Wexford.
Wexford.
Yes.
Okay, so, so those are the four. Okay, just want to make sure, those are the four, the others...
As, as illustrated in the existing building, and also as illustrated on this sheet. So, these sheets will become part and parcel to the conditions of approval, with the minimum square footage of twenty-one hundred, twenty feet. So, you took a motion, discussion, then you can take the vote.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, we have a favorable recommendation from Commissioner Culpepper, and it was seconded by Commissioner Willis. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so it passes on.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Good luck at the council meeting. All right, Ms. Turner, we got the minutes, let's get out of here.
Three types.
Three types, yeah. Yeah, you got three types of four homes, that's why I messed up, okay? Yeah, we only got two types. That didn't pick up the number.
It's massive. So, I had some questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, Commissioner Martin?
If I may, through the Chair, I did receive from Mr. Martin earlier today, some amendments to the minutes, in this case, to the April twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen regular minutes. Just a couple of changes on page three. There's a reference to December twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, as the date of the meeting, so that would be amended to two thousand nineteen. And then, on page six, there is a recommendation for postponement for PSLU eighteen dash zero 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 seven, and site plan PSP eighteen dash zero 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 nine. However, neither one of those reference numbers appeared in the minutes, so we want to make sure that we do reference those. So, in this case, it would be Mr. Culpepper states that I move that PSLU eighteen dash zero zero seven, and also SP, site plan PSP eighteen dash zero 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 nine, be postponed until our main meeting, so those will be the two changes.
Okay, good catch, Commissioner Martin, good job.
To the Chair.
Commissioner Culpepper.
I recommend approval of meetings at April the third, study meeting, April the nineteenth, long-range study meeting, April twenty-fourth, regular meeting, with the three, with the changes on page three, and also the changes on page six, as noted by the planner.
Second? I have a motion by Commissioner Culpepper, seconded by Commissioner Mia.
You've mentioned four dates for the minutes?
I mentioned April the third, April the tenth, April twenty-fourth.
Sorry, I thought it was nineteen, okay, let's slide it down.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. We have a motion, favorable, favorable motion, Culpepper, and seconded by Commissioner Mia, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Through the Chair, I abstain.
Thank you, abstain, Mr. Willis.
And again, if I could just talk about protocol, you can accept the motion, and then you can have discussion on the motion. So, if there's clarification, it'd be better to do it after the motion's been made, and then you can ask for amendment or so forth, so.
Looking at Roberts here.
Well, we don't have to be that strict, but we want to make sure that we follow harbor...
You know what? Is there any miscellaneous?
Uh, yes, you do have a June tenth, or June fifth, meeting, study meeting, we do have four items prepared, and are preparing for that agenda.
Fifth, okay. Anything else, and that's it? Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.